I'm Kelly Cousins and I'm president of the Pleasanton Voters.com group. And along with our co-host Dubliners for Change and Friends of Livermore, we thank you for coming to this forum. The purpose of the forum and our purpose for being here is that we are a citizen-led, grassroots organization whose purpose is to educate the public about crucial issues that affect our Tri-Valley. Tonight, we would like to give the city council candidates from Dublin, Pleasanton, and Livermore an opportunity to answer questions and state their positions on issues related to growth in our cities. We hope that there are answers will help you make informed decisions about who to vote for in November. And I want to introduce Dan, who's part of the group from Dublin, and he's going to say a few things about the Dublin group.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming tonight. It's great to see such a full house. It's great. Thank you for the candidates for all making time to come here, beat the traffic, find the parking, and be here to become more informed voters. I'm Dan Scale. I'm the chair of Dubliners for Change. I'll just make this really quick because we want to leave as much time for the debate as possible. Dubliners for Change, if you want to learn about our organization, you can go to dublinersforchange.com. There's a lot of information there. Basically, we're a grassroots organization. We have successfully passed two citizen initiatives that have limited housing in Dublin. We have successfully petitioned the city council on many issues to reduce the amount of new residential growth in Dublin. We are concerned, you know, the name implies Dubliners for Change, we're a little concerned about the status quo. We're concerned about the rapid growth in Dublin that is leading to traffic, to impacts on schools with ever-credited classrooms, or the loss of open space, and some of those other issues. So if you share some of those values, please go to our website, sign up, you can join our group and become more active. And best of luck, and again, thanks for all coming to this.
I hope all the Dublin candidates are here because we'd like you to come forward if you could at this time. And you'll see your name tag there, and you could sit there. We appreciate you coming on such a, at 6 o'clock, it's not always easy to get here. I'd like to introduce Juliette Goodrich. We are pleased to have the author and five-time Emmy award-winning KPIX TV news anchor and reporter Juliette Goodrich as our moderator tonight. Juliette was a 12-year resident of Dublin and now resides in Pleasanton, her hometown. Thank you, Juliette, for donating your time tonight on behalf of our communities.
Well, thank you very much, and especially for inviting me to moderate at the Tri-Valley Crossroads Forum. And candidates, I'd like to welcome each and every one of you. We're going to have time to introduce yourselves in just a minute. I think that we've picked a number in the order. Have we done that yet? Who's going to go first? Have we picked a number yet? We'll start to do that. I'd like to thank all of you who have been here to submit questions online at the Pleasanton Farmers Market. And due to the number of questions and also similarities, we have consolidated the questions that are similar and strive to include as many questions as possible, and certainly on the key issues as well. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. So each candidate will have time to introduce themselves, to answer questions asked by the moderator, that'd be neat, and make a closing statement as well. And due to time constraints and the different number of candidates from each city, the number of questions and timing will vary from city to city. And I'd like to thank our timekeepers, where are they? On the front, Lou Asbury and Al Exner, for assisting us tonight. They will notify the candidates when they have 30 seconds left to speak by holding up the yellow card right there, and 10 seconds to wrap up their speech by holding up the red card. The candidate who draws number one will be the first to speak, followed by the candidate to the left, and continuing in that order. All right, you picked number one. Okay. And we ask the audience to be respectful of the candidates, of course, and not to hold up signs, boo, or cheer. And when the questioning is completed, you'll have an opportunity to applaud in appreciation for the candidates' participation. I think this will be pretty mellow, I'm expecting, right? We're just here to listen to what they have to say. And why don't we begin with our introductions? Each of you will have 90 seconds to tell us about yourself and why you're running for office. And so, Erin, I believe you picked number one, is that correct? And we'll start our time, and we will begin with you. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name's Arun Gohel. Today, I want to simplify my reasons for you. If you want more housing, I'm not your guy. If you want more congestion and traffic, I'm not your guy. If you want less space in schools due to housing, I'm not your guy. If you want less retail and commercial space as choices for the residents, then I'm not your guy. However, if you want control on housing growth, you want solutions on traffic problems, and you want more small businesses with a small-town feeling, just like here in Pleasanton, then consider supporting me. I'm a candidate with a proven track record, having delivered multiple capital infrastructure projects throughout the nation. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in civil engineering, and I've dealt with multi-billion dollars in funding and capital infrastructure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please go ahead, introduce yourself, you have 90 seconds.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for hosting this this evening. My name is Doreen Warrenburg, and I'm currently on the Dublin City Council. I've lived in Dublin for the past 26 years with my husband, who we've been married for 37 years. My two children went to the Dublin Public Schools as well. I work for a healthcare organization, and I manage billion-dollar construction projects. This is one of the tools that gives me the expertise to be on city council. I am here because I want to continue our police and fire protection. I want to manage smart growth in Dublin, as well as work collaboratively with our school and to enhance current Dublin life that we have there. Smart growth involves connecting to our bikes and trails, finishing our sidewalks. We have many residents that want their area finished, and as well as continue with economic development within our city. I support small businesses and also innovation, and would love to have new businesses come into Dublin. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Melissa Hernandez-Straw. I would like to thank everyone for attending this evening and allowing us the opportunity to share our views with the community. I grew up in a small California town near our state capital named Dixon, and I've been fortunate to call Dublin home for almost two decades. I am deeply rooted to our great American backyard, and I am running for Dublin City Council because I care about the future of our city, our families, and our community. I have devoted my time here in Dublin to our community, schools, and youth sports. I am the mother of two children, and Dublin is a special place to raise them. My background in the small business sector, which keeps me rooted to the needs of the small businesses and the importance of a viable, sustainable local economy. As I mentioned, I am very passionate about the community, and I'm currently the chair of the Human Service Commission. I am also proud to be part of Congressman Swabell's Women's Advisory Board, the City of Dublin Marketing and Branding Committee, Dublin Crossings Community, Park Master Plan Task Force, City Liaison for Dublin Little League, Rotaryian, and also involved with Parentive Faculty Staff Organization. In order to keep this great Dublin, my priorities are public safety, nurturing our local economy while being fiscally responsible, bridging our city and our schools together while preserving our open space. Tonight, I'm Melissa Hanson-Straw, ask for your support.
Melissa, thank you. And Sean, before we move forward, I just want to mention there are two candidates running for the position of mayor, four candidates running for two positions on city council. We, I want you to note, some candidates are absent tonight. All of the mayoral and city council candidates from the city of Dublin have been invited to participate in this forum. So everyone's been here. And Sean, go ahead, please introduce yourself.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Castello. I've been running for office in Dublin since 1988. I've been running every single year because I want us to believe in ourselves. We are people who need to work with ourselves and not build and build and build and build. I've been in Dublin for 32 years. When I first moved to Dublin, Dordie was the end of Dublin. After that, Dordie went east. And I'm sorry that it's all, we're taken away of too much land away from our animals. We need to take care of everybody in our city, us and the animals too. I am running for mayor. I am serious about being here for each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, and thank you to those involved in organizing tonight's forum. My name is Mona Lisa Bolosderos, and I love Dublin. Prior to moving to Dublin in 2004, I had moved a total of 21 times. At that time, I was 29 years old. So believe me when I tell you, we knew exactly what sort of value we were getting when we purchased our home in that community, in our community. I'm running for Dublin City Council because I believe Dublin deserves the great quality of life it has come to expect, and someone who will fight to keep it that way. Growth needs to pause, schools need to catch up, traffic needs to be addressed, police and fire services need to expand as our city is continuing to fulfill what it has already set forth in motion. It will take long nights and hard work, but we need to strategize on how to handle each of these pain points for Dublin to change, of course. I want to champion Dublin for the great city that it is. Dublin reminds me of the little engine that could. Dublin is still young with much potential. I want Dublin to grow its potential in a way that will bring it more sustainability with retail, dependability when it comes to educating our students, safety for all to enjoy our daily freedoms, and knowing that here in Dublin, everyone is welcome to call it home. That is the vision I have for Dublin. And I know if I'm selected for council, I will work diligently to make each and every one of these aspirations come true.
All right, thank you. All right, we begin our first question, and that will be directed to Doreen. You'll begin first. And this one is, would you agree to revisit and make changes to Dublin's 20-year-old general and specific plans in order to address unforeseen infrastructure issues such as traffic, rise in crime, and crowded schools? You'll have 60 seconds to answer.
Yes, the Eastern Dublin specific plan is more what you're referring to, where we voted on that 20 years ago, and that was to expand on the east, and that included open space, parks, trails, and homes, et cetera. We have revisited through the years. We do this on a regular basis with the city, and we have discussed going forward and talking about some other spaces that is currently zoned industrial, that is really not adequate for that. So yes, I am willing to revisit it, and also I also look at each project as it comes in and compare it to how it was planned in that zoning. And if it, you know, is looking to increase density in that, we look at that, and I am not for increasing density at all.
Okay, Doreen, thank you. Melissa?
I think that we should be open to revisiting the east of Dublin. We should all remember that we've also had 14 or less units provided, and I think that's important for us to understand. But moving forward, we have what we have now, and I don't believe that we all expected it to be as impacted as it has been. I believe that as a council member, that we should look at every single project that comes before us at a complete, you know, value and be able to see and look at everything and look at both sides before we vote on a project.
Okay, so thank you. Sean?
Like I was saying earlier, the last 20 years, we have been spending all of that 20 years building and building and building and building. We need to slow down our buildings, we need to recycle the businesses that we already have. If other people want to move in, take over their businesses, new businesses, that is fine. We have like eight Starbucks in Dublin. We have too many Starbucks. We have a lot of businesses that are duplicating themselves. We should limit the type of businesses that want to duplicate themselves like that because, I'm sorry, I have a disability, I go too long, but we have to invite other businesses also, not just the ones that want to be a monopoly of the building of the city.
All right, thank you, Melissa.
Yes, I do feel strongly that we should revisit the Dublin Eastern specific plan, and it should be opened up from time to time, because we have so many things going on in the city that you have to look at the overall picture, but you also have to look at that area as well. We have experienced incorrect data and numbers and projections. So those are things that if we had been watching it all along or revisiting plans such as this, then you can anticipate certain things. So in my mind, that is something that we should do on a regular basis. We should open up and revisit the plans.
Okay, thank you.
So first of all, there's not a question here. It should be opened up, and it must be opened up, because I can say one thing, what we originally evaluated or made assumptions, that's an assumption, and now we know some realities of the truth. So I think we need to open it up. We need to look at the demographic studies and the assumptions that we're at that point. We had assumed at that point that certain amount of residents were going to be per house, a certain amount of student generation would be at that house. We even assumed how many vehicles may be coming through the Tri-Valley, or even within Dublin itself. And at that time, it was utilizing data from 2020. MTC created the dataset from 2020. We are now needing to utilize data that is using the projections for 2040. So we have about 4,500 homes in the pipe, we got another 4,000 potential, and we need to sit back, relook, reevaluate, just like any business would. We need to be a smart Dublin.
Okay, on to our second question. IKEA has proposed to build one of their largest stores on one of the city's last vacant commercially-zoned parcels. Some welcome the revenue, others are concerned about traffic and the loss of opportunity to implement a pedestrian-friendly shopping area or office space in a prime BART location. What is your position on IKEA? Melissa?
Of course, I'm passionate about this as much as every single one of you out there. And I really believe that this is something everybody, any council member, really needs to put a lot of thought into, because it will change our community. To say you're against a project before an environmental impact report is released is not something a good council member should do or does. Of course, like I said, I'm worried and I'm passionate about the traffic and construction and all the impacts it brings. But we also need to consider the growth that it may also bring as well. So, but to signal out one project and to consider it and automatically say yes or no, we really have to put more thought into it. Thank you.
Sean?
When this was brought up about five elections ago, when I was running for mayor or city council, I forget which one, but I was against IKEA in the beginning because of the traffic that it's going to cause. When you have wheelchair people in this city driving around on the sidewalks as it is, when you put in another business as big as IKEA is going to be, you're going to have problems of people not watching where they're going when a wheelchair is going to go through the parking lot to get to another business inside the IKEA thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So I actually have sat down and I've met with representatives from IKEA on a few occasions. And the biggest pain points for the city and for the residents is the traffic, it is the size of the building, and those two things, they were not willing to discuss any changes. They are pretty adamant that that's the size and that traffic, they don't feel will be an issue, or they'll find out for sure in the EIR. But it just, you know, that really concerns me when you have somebody who is not willing to work with the community. And their proposal was to add parking, was to raise the building by putting a parking garage underneath, which just makes the building even larger. So for me, I just, I can't at this time say that I would support it because of those major pain points, and I just feel like the place, the location for it is wrong. It's not the right company for the right, and it's not the right time, and it's not the right place.
So for me, many of you know, I've taken a public statement, and essentially, I was the first candidate to take a position of no for personal reasons about the project. And let me state that very, very clearly. And not everything that I'm going to state is going to be addressed in an EIR. To say that you want to wait for an EIR, for instance, will only address traffic concerns, or it may address the air quality. I've been through some of these processes, and I know what they include. So for instance, my concerns, personal concerns, as a resident of Dublin, like you, not a politician, I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the aesthetics along the Promenade Quarter for Dublin, bringing its vitality, where people will feel invited and wanting to enjoy the city. I am not for a big box in that location, one that does not bring aesthetic appeal. I believe we need to preserve our choices, and I believe we need to not look at a business that has negative impacts on small local businesses.
Okay, thank you, Doreen.
IKEA has done a few presentations here within, and I've attended all three of them, also the Farmers Market and Splatter. So they have reached out to the community, they've asked for their input, they've asked for their ideas. And I'm not, I cannot say that I'm for it or against it because of being on city council. That would impact me on voting for this project when the time comes. But as a citizen, I've never shopped at IKEA, it's not a personal favorite of mine, but I have to look at this entirely and what it will do for the city. You asked on how it would be for traffic and police. Well, the revenue would increase our police forces. They do things for the community. So you look at the project as a whole and not in small segments, and that's what you're responsible for on city council.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you all sticking to the time. And this next question is actually a two-parter, but you have 30 seconds each for each question, but they're really basically yes or no. You could elaborate a little bit, but the main thing is yes or no. So we will begin, Sean. Have you accepted campaign contributions from developers or those related to developers?
Absolutely not. Nobody gives money to me at all.
All right. The second part, 30 seconds to answer, and again, it's pretty much yes or no. Would you support a motion or recommendation that Dublin candidates do not accept campaign contributions from developers and PACs?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Campaign contributions should be of us, the people of Dublin, and not developers that want to get their hands in the pockets of the city council and make it so that they think that they have an end, okay? We all should be working together.
Okay, perfect. Yes, the first question, yes or no, have you accepted campaign contributions from developers or those related to developers?
No, I have not. And I actually made it my stance early in my campaign that I would not accept donations from developers. And it wasn't anything about my opponents and what their decisions are, it's not about them, it was just my beliefs, and that's how I wanted to run my campaign.
All right, the second part, would you support a motion or recommendation that Dublin candidates do not accept campaign contributions from developers and PACs?
Yes, I would. I believe that there can be a direct conflict, I believe that there can be, it just puts you in a situation that it'd be better if they were just left out of it. I don't think that we should be able to take campaign contributions from developers.
Okay, all right. Arun, so have you accepted campaign contributions from developers or those related to developers?
I have not, so the answer is no. I'm running a clean-money campaign, and I believe in focusing on the voters and the residents.
And would you support a motion or recommendation that Dublin candidates do not accept campaign contributions from developers and PACs?
Absolutely. I don't even know why this is a question, because we need to support the residents, we need to stay very, very focused on what is right and make unbiased choices.
Okay, thank you. Doreen, have you accepted campaign contributions from developers or those related to developers?
No, I have not. I have self-funded majority of my campaign at this time.
And would you support a motion or recommendation that Dublin candidates do not accept campaign contributions from developers and PACs?
Sure, because this is your opportunity to have a grassroots campaign, getting out, knocking on doors, meeting the people, and talking to them what's really about there. It's hard, and absolutely, I'd support no developer funds, because I think that makes you work harder and do your best.
Okay, thank you. And Melissa, have you accepted campaign contributions from developers or those related to developers?
No, I have not. And I would support, you know, going back to no, I have not accepted any developer money. And I feel that it's important that we sit there and share that with our community members, since that's a victory to them. And the second answer to the second question is, yes, I would be supportive of running a clean campaign, and I agree with Doreen. I walk every Saturday and Sunday, and I think that when people turn around from the community that give you money, they more or less are supporting you. And I think that makes a difference.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this will begin question number four. This is 60 seconds to answer, and I believe, Mona Lisa, you're the first to go on this one. There has been a trend in Dublin City Council to convert commercial and retail-zoned property to medium and high-density residential. What is your vision, plan to instead bring pedestrian-friendly shopping and dining as well as office space to Dublin?
Okay, well, first of all, I want to say that in the two instances that I've seen come before the council on that, I actually went and spoke against it. One was the Promenade, and the other was the Green Project, which is now the Clover Project, which is IKEA. So keep it dry. So no, I do not support any sort of rezoning of commercial to residential. And instead, I think there are products out there that they can get creative with when it comes to commercial. One thing that I sort of liked that the Promenade had brought forth a few times back was where they had just a variety of restaurants, and then they, I think they had like the integration to the park in the back. But it's just, you know, you can get creative, and I feel like they are trying to make more money by changing it to residential.
And I feel like they are trying to make more money by changing it to residential. And the excuses that have been made as far as not being able to fulfill commercial or retail, to me, it's just, it doesn't make any sense because here in the Tri-Valley, we have, we support each other. We shop in Dublin and we shop in other cities. So I think they need to, I think they can be done.
Okay, thank you.
So first of all, I have a track record for this. Is I oppose conversions. I don't believe that's a good way to be looking at the way we've done our master plan. When we look at some of the biggest developments outside in Eastern Dublin, they started off with proposing an Eastern Dublin specific plan that specifically isolated key locations for retail. There was an assumption, there was a reason. And that same developer or developers selected those locations. So why are they coming back to change their mind now? I really believe we need to focus on developing those out, for instance, like a promenade that was promised, having areas that are places of congregation, congregation, where they're pedestrian-friendly, where they have a pub, a lounge, a restaurant, something that is like a theater or something that creates a point of attraction where people driving by uses as an opportunity to come to Dublin.
Okay, thank you. Doreen.
The conversion is all dependent on what is surrounding it. There was one incident on the west side that we, I did approve it. And it was a very difficult decision because I was looking at the business where it was hidden and it did not get enough visitation from the residents there. And they've been relocated and moved to another area and this will be housing. But I think it depends on each instance. The office space has been on my goal since 2012 when I ran. I want to bring satellite offices from our Silicon Valley to here to try and reduce our traffic. That has one of been my main goals, but I keep hitting the wall on that because we live between Pleasanton and San Ramon that has sufficient office space and it's not really a requirement here in Dublin. But that is one of my goals to try and achieve, is build more office space near the BART station to try and reduce some of the traffic that we have on our roads.
Thank you. Melissa. Sure, there have been a trend, or there has been a trend in Dublin's city council to convert commercial and retail zoned property to medium and high-density residential. What is your vision, plan to instead bring pedestrian-friendly shopping and dining as well as office space to Dublin?
So first of all, I would like to make sure that everyone is aware that I spoke against the Toronto project many times. Every time he would come back and ask for more residential, I would be the first one at the podium and sit there and say that, no, we need to give our residents what they were told they were going to be given, which was more commercial, more commercial, more places to eat and more places to be able to enjoy than spending time together and coming together. I believe that we should definitely keep it commercial. And we want to bring it in city, we want to bring in commercial so that we can have our residents work in Dublin, be able to, you know, ride their bikes to work and to spend their money in Dublin as well.
Okay, thank you. Shaun.
I live at the Dublin BART station, Dublin Pleasanton BART station. And the last 10 years, they, I was the very first building on that block right there in front of Cat Park. And they're building up so much around me that it's all for high-income people. There is no low income except for my building. We need, if we're going to build somewhere, if we're going to build something, we need to have more low-income places to stay. No, I don't think that we need to have it for, sorry, have more businesses that is going to create more traffic because traffic is so hard for even the people that walk down the street get around.
Okay, thank you. Have we done the circle, correct? Okay, so now we're going to go to the next question. Dublin, this is 60-second answer also. Dublin is facing a multimillion-dollar deficit by 2020. Where would you cut expenses or increase revenue to deal with this deficit?
Now, that's a loaded question. And I don't think 60 seconds is going to do enough justice. But first of all, we need to focus on developing our retail space. We need to focus like other cities around us. Retail provides a higher component of tax revenue. Where we can cut is we need to focus on our contracting policies. We need to open that policy up, make it have a term limit, and make it go through a proper bidding process so we can solicit appropriate value, professional technical expertise, and allow our local businesses to thrive. It's important when we evaluate our budget that we understand what are the critical earmarks off of it. We should even be open to further evaluating our pension plans if necessary. Dublin had one of the best pension plans till date and that has a significant impact on our overall revenue.
Thank you. Doreen.
How would I cut expenses? Well, I would agree. We do need to focus on additional retail in our area. But I also think that our, we would have to cut back in the city. We've already done a cutback, a five-year contract with our salaries where the employees are paying more into it, so that has been a benefit. We really do negotiate well with our contracts, with our police and fire, but I want to maintain that. So I think the next step would be is reducing activities, maybe through our parks and rec. We'd have to ask our staff to double up and do other things versus expanding staff, which is very difficult to do when we have an increased population here. And they value what our parks and rec offer. So it's, and I would hate to say this, but I mean, looking at our events like Splatter or things like that, those are the things that we have to look at and cut back on.
Melissa.
We also, you know, to be able to cut back in some of our expenditures, we need to consider everything. Looking at our contracts can be one. But we definitely need to keep in mind that public safety is our priority in Dublin and it should be our priority as is in many other states. I believe that the city has done a decent job. They, for our OPEB program, as of January of 2016, instead of contributing $1,600 for each one of their staff members that retired from there, they have reduced it to the state level of $125, $125 a month. The pension plans, of course, the employees are putting more into it, into their pension plans. And I believe that bringing commercial and retail will help us with our revenues.
Okay, Melissa, thank you. Shaun.
When I was a, I have a lot of accomplishments here in Dublin. One of them was to be, I was the housing commissioner for Royal Vista. And all four years that I was there, I gave my money back to the city. I didn't get any money for doing that. If it came down to dollar to dollar, if we really, really run out of money, I would not mind cutting my salary to be the mayor. If it meant that, that, if you think that is paying a city council people too much money, I would not mind just going there and doing it for free.
Thank you.
Okay, so for me, I definitely agree that the policies and contracts need to be reviewed. Changes and updates will more likely need to be made on those. Also, we need to address the issues, those issues with the combination of scrubbing the budget, attracting and retaining successful commercial and retail businesses that are suited for the Dublin and the Tri-Valley. Pension plans are doing well. Police and fire, it's a need. It's not even a want. So that's not even a question. We have to keep those quality services intact. So there's different ways to go about it, but like everyone's spoken, it's pretty much keeping the quality of services we have with police and fire, trying to attract new retail into our, into Dublin. And if we have to, then look at the budget to see what can be removed or what can be replaced.
All right, thank you. We'll begin with Doreen on this one. 60 seconds to answer again. Would you commit to an independent review of the city's finances, contracts, and staff-contractor relationships?
I'm sorry, would I commit?
Would you commit to an independent review of the city's finances, contracts, and staff-contractor relationships? So it's talking about an independent review.
Well, absolutely. That currently already happens on our finances. That happens on a every two- to five-year basis as well. We are now currently reviewing contracts and have made modifications as we go forward because as you know, we did have an instance with a planner that was contracted out and we found some irregularities. So that contract is under review and it's going to be coming back to the public here soon. So, but absolutely, there's nothing to hide. I think it should be transparent and open to the public.
All right, thank you. Melissa.
I agree with Doreen on this one. I feel that we should definitely always keep a review, just like in any business in your household. You look at your expenses, you look at what you're bringing in. You want to be able to make sure that you have enough money to be able to fulfill all the bills that you have. There should definitely be a review on a maybe yearly basis as well. You know, just like your constitution, it's a changing document. So I think the city is completely changing at all times, so we definitely have to keep up on that.
All right, thank you. Shaun.
I don't understand the question.
Okay, so the question is, would you commit to an independent review of the city's finances, contracts, and staff-contractor relationships? So essentially, it's the independent review. Would you commit to that and say yes? If it's necessary?
Yes, I would. As a matter, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, I personally, if I became mayor, I would go to each and every meeting, each and every time that they have a meeting in City Hall, and I would say, hey, how can I help you? How can we see all these books and see what is wrong with it?
Thank you.
So yes, I definitely would. I think it's good to get an unbiased opinion from time to time to see where our inefficiencies are and where we can do better. Also, in the end, you could come out with a better option or a better procedure. So, and also it is for transparency. I think the public has been, the trust in the public recently has been a little bit shattered because of the things that have taken place. And so to rebuild that trust, this is something that would be a good idea to do.
Again, you know, having, as a cost control engineer, one of my functions is making sure and ensuring our accounting practices are accurate. An independent review is absolutely and prudently required. We need to meet all state and federal regulations. I had in last year May identified some particular instances that have come to fruition and made the headlines. And I think it's important that people know that. Last year May, there was a contracting policy that was brought forward and a contract was being opened for renew. It had not gone through a RFP process. And therefore, absolutely, we need to review these. We need to verify the staff-contractor relationships. And we need to ensure that the contracts are meeting all regulations and we need to have the appropriate invoice review. There should not be 27 hours in a 24-hour day. I don't care what system it's on.
Thank you. All right, this is our closing statement now. And so Melissa, we'll begin with you. And that is, each of you will have 60 seconds for a closing statement to finish a thought or rebuttal to another question.
Thank you. As a mother and a 17-year resident and an active leader in our community, I understand each and every one of your concerns this evening in regards to our Dublin. I have the exact same concerns in regards to traffic, the growth in our city and our schools, as well as IKEA. As a growing city in California, we will certainly have difficult decisions to make. I assure you that I will take thoughtful considerations to any projects that are presented before me. I want to keep Dublin the great city that it is for our residents and our children by making sure that we have exceptional public safety, the safety that we deserve, expand our local economy by having good paying jobs while being fiscally responsible, bridging our city and our schools together, and preserving our open space. That is why I was a no-ante. I'm grateful as being the only candidate to have strong leaders endorsing me. This shows the confidence they have in me, such as Alameda County Sheriff, Greg Ahern, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Local Firefighters, Local Union 55, Scott Haggerty, Nate Miley, our entire council, and our board trustees. Again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Shaun, you have 60 seconds for a closing statement.
It's too bad that this thing won't move. I have a little, small demonstration. This is how green that I am. Can I get any greener than an electric wheelchair in this city? I am to make sure that everybody understands that we all work together and I am for each and every one of you. I've been at Chabot College for 14 years. I taught at Chabot College. I was on the radio for eight years. I have 28 years of running for office. I am for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun.
So at this point in time, it is up to you, the voter. What direction do you want the city to take? What, who do you feel will take the city in that direction? Who do you trust to make these sound decisions? Honesty, integrity, due diligence, hardworking, these are all the qualities that we want in our council members. I hope you have seen these qualities in me. I have learned much by listening more than speaking. I would be humbled if you choose me as your candidate this November 8th. Thank you.
So first of all, thank you for attending tonight. It's important that you make an informed decision this election. This will determine the future of our city and it'll define the issues that mean something to you, the residents. Make your voice heard. So I'm going to leave you with some questions and some validation. Does housing growth impact you? I have a proven track record for trying to slow growth in the city. Is traffic congestion bugging you? Going to and from a high school or even in the evening, from one side to the other? Can you imagine that taking twice as much time as it does today? If you want more retail and businesses and not another tax, you might want to consider your choices today. Increasing safety, police and fire is something I've been advocating for over 11 years in Eastern Dublin. And I've done so pretty positively. This last May, I pushed for an increase in the police and there was an increase. I'm running a clean money campaign and it's your interest before special interests.
Thank you. Doreen will conclude with you.
Well, thank you all again for being here tonight. And a vote for me is a commitment to Dublin. I'm here to collaborate with city council staff, city council and staff in keeping our city moving forward. I will partner with our schools and continue with our values in keeping Dublin sustainable. I encourage the enhancement of quality of life for open space and parks. And I will also work with our regional elected officials to resolve our traffic by working with them from BART to ACE as well as continue with additional BART parking in Dublin. Thank you very much.